Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody to the, what is the date? March 26th, Planning Commission meeting for the city of Salem. And again, we are going to be broadcast tonight on CCTV. So if I could ask anybody who comes to the microphone and commissioners to please speak clearly into the microphones. We'll start tonight's meeting with a call to order and if we could have a reading of the attendance.
Commissioner Lewis.
President.
Commissioner Frye.
Here.
Commissioner Blasey.
Here.
Commissioner Fox.
Here.
Commissioner Guyer.
Here.
Commissioner Palmetier, absent excuse, Commissioner Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This brings us to our time for communication from council, boards, commissions, and agencies of the city. If there's anyone in that capacity that wishes to speak to the Planning Commission this evening, if they come forward. Don't see any. This brings us to the first opportunity for appearance of interested citizens. This time is available for interested citizens to comment on specific agenda items other than public hearings, deliberations, and the merits of land use issues that are reviewable by the Planning Commission at public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the Planning Commission this evening? All right. Next is the consent calendar. There's one item on that, and that is the minutes from March 19th. And Commissioner Guyer, your turn.
I move that we approve the minutes of the March 19th Salem Planning Commission.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we move into the continuation and tonight's only agenda item, and that is a continuing hearing code amendment case number CA 10-04 regarding wireless communication facilities. And do we have a staff update report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners and guests. I'm Pamela Cole, Associate Planner. I'm presenting the supplemental staff report for Code Amendment 10-4, a proposed update of Salem's Wireless Communications Facilities Code. Our request that the staff report and attachments, as well as the revised versions of SRC Chapter 715 and the corresponding amendments and additional written testimony submitted for this hearing, be entered into the official record. The Planning Commission opened this public hearing on February 26th. We received new testimony at the hearing, and the Commission continued the hearing until tonight to allow staff to respond and to allow additional testimony as well. Written testimony received February 27th through March 19th is included in the supplemental staff report, and later testimony is included with your additions sheet. In the supplemental report and revisions to SRC 715, staff addressed the major industries' issues that the industry representatives raised. First, we do recommend some revisions to allow applicants to address capacity issues as well as coverage issues. We also recommend revisions to the definition of base station to correspond with the Federal Communication Commission's recent interpretations. Regarding colocation requirements, staff included four options for revisions to the colocation general rule. Those are on pages 7 and 8 of the supplemental report, and we recommend the fourth option to address capacity issues and also include a provision to address height of existing facilities. Staff also proposed that support tower replacements without substantial changes in dimensions would be exempt from new siting permits. We recommend reducing the siting priorities to four categories from six, and we made corresponding changes to the classes to reflect those new priorities. These changes encourage colocation and the use of existing sites other than significant changes to existing support towers and construction of new support towers. In the siting priority, we removed the distinctions between colocations inside right-of-way and outside right-of-way, and the distinctions between replacement utility poles inside right-of-way and outside right-of-way. In the classes, we simplified the wording to refer to those priorities. One of the most significant issues that the industry raised was that several provisions in the proposed code create barriers to service. They mentioned preference for non-residential locations, requirements that they prove that multiple but less obtrusive structures are not feasible, and some of the height limits and camouflage requirements near residential areas. Staff recommended those proposed height setback and design standards as a reasonable balance between the industry's desire to provide service and citizens' desires to minimize impacts on residential areas. Citizens have requested that we retain a current 300-foot setback from residential zones and some 35-foot height limits in some zones, which are even more restrictive than this proposal. We also received comments regarding modification of non-conforming towers so that they could support additional antenna arrays. Staff recommends exempting these from new siting permits if they are not involving substantial changes, but if they are proposing substantial changes, we recommend that they be processed as Class III applications, including public hearings. That Class III and Type III process is similar to the current conditional use process for expanding non-conforming uses. Based on the industry comments, we also recommend some revisions to application requirements to the support tower criteria and siting standards. We found that the way we had written these before, in combination with the new priorities and other documents, that we were unintentionally prohibiting modifications to towers, which would have been more reasonable than new towers. We also considered industry comments that administrative relief should be allowed under some circumstances rather than a Type III variance with a public hearing, and also that the variance criteria should consider whether users can obtain reliable coverage within a building. Staff compared the proposed wireless communication facility variance provisions in 715.090 with the proposed Unified Development Code provisions for variances and adjustments. We found that a Type II adjustment process with opportunity for public comment and appeal, similar to the UDC Class II adjustment, is the appropriate process for deviations from the wireless communication facility development standards, and we've revised 715.090 accordingly. Industry representatives also requested that we limit the proposed third-party review to certain circumstances and also limit the fees. Staff does recommend limiting the third-party review to applications for adjustments and also to applications for new towers in residential, public, mixed-use, and overlay zones. These cases are the most likely to involve disputes over technical data. We don't intend to require third-party review in all of these cases, but we do want to leave our options open. Staff does not recommend specific limits for the fees so we can retain flexibility. The Planning Commission also received comments and testimony from citizens and neighborhood associations. Several citizens commented they were concerned about health impacts of radio frequency emissions, and citizens and the Northeast Neighbors, NEN, requested that the city monitor emissions and use fees received through franchise permits or land use applications. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 prohibits us from regulating placement, construction, and modification based on emissions if the facilities comply with FCC regulations. The proposed setbacks, locations, height limits, and other provisions are not based on concerns over emissions. The proposed application requirements include documentation that facilities will comply with the FCC standards. Therefore, staff do not recommend that the city monitor emissions. The city cannot set the emission levels or regulate the emissions. Citizens and neighborhood associations generally requested more restrictive standards for siting and design than the proposal. Several citizens and NEN asked that we retain the current 300-foot setbacks from residential zones for towers over 35 feet in height. Staff proposed a 30-foot setback, which is a significant change because the existing 300-foot setback makes it difficult to provide service to residential areas. Large areas of the city are zoned residential with no nearby commercial or industrial zones. Many newer residential areas have no above-ground power poles where antennas could be attached. Commercial zones are often configured as strips along arterial streets, and many zones are not deep enough to provide 300-foot setbacks to all nearby residential zones. For these reasons, we've found that setback variances are often necessary for new cell towers. With the proposed amendment, towers may be located within residential zones if the applicant documents that there are no other locations that would meet coverage or capacity needs. We can't consider emissions as the basis for setbacks, but we can consider safety, visual compatibility, and property values. Towers are designed not to collapse, so a 300-foot setback is not warranted for safety. Staff recommended the 30-foot setback in combination with screening and landscaping, stealth or camouflage design standards, and height limits to improve visual compatibility and reduce impacts on property values. Similarly, several citizens and NEN asked that we retain maximum cell tower heights of 35 feet, which now apply in the residential single-family, duplex residential, and multifamily residential one zones, particularly in an area along 14th Street Northeast with older homes. The current proposal would allow support towers 50 feet tall in the RA, RS, and RD zones, and 70 feet tall in RM1, RM2, and CO zones. These are the same heights we currently allow for non-residential structures in these zones. Our zoning maps indicated that the area on 14th Street Northeast is zoned RM2 with the current maximum height less than 70 feet and proposed maximum height of 70 feet. The trade-off between the reduced height would be that more towers would be needed to provide service. Several citizens and NEN also requested that we require all equipment in residential areas to be placed underground to allay noise and aesthetics. The proposal would require equipment to be placed underground in right-of-way only in historic districts or in right-of-way adjacent to historic districts or historic resources. Wireless industry representatives have explained that undergrounding is very expensive. It exposes equipment to water damage, and it poses safety issues for workers. The proposed amendments are similar to current franchise agreements that allow above-ground equipment in right-of-way outside historic districts, and the proposed amendments require size limits or screening for equipment. All equipment would be subject to the city's noise ordinance as well. Citizens also requested that we require camouflage design for all support towers and facilities in right-of-way. The proposal requires camouflage design for the support towers in or within 300 feet of residential, commercial office, and public cemetery zones. This has the effect of encouraging providers to locate outside of these areas. We are not recommending camouflage design for facilities in right-of-way because they have less impact than support towers, but we are recommending that antennas be mounted on arms no longer than one foot in right-of-way. All of the proposed design standards are intended to improve visual compatibility and to reduce negative impacts on property values. Citizens and NEN also asked for several revisions to notification requirements in Salem Revised Code Chapter 300. The first was notification for all antenna applications. Second, expansion of the notification radius from 250 feet to 1,500 feet. And the third was extension of the comment period from 14 days to 30 days. Staff does not recommend revisions or exceptions to the procedures ordinance because these could increase procedural errors. Antenna colocations would be a Type I process, and no notice would be required. Under the procedures ordinance, the city will mail notice of Type II and Type III applications to interested parties who have submitted written requests to be on a mailing list. And finally, a 30-day comment period would make it difficult to meet federal shot clock timelines, which are 90 days for colocations and 150 days for other applications. This proposal represents staff's attempt to balance the need for service with the community's desire for compatible facilities, and we recommend that the Planning Commission recommend City Council approve the proposed amendments as revised.
Any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Frye.
Excuse me. When we had the meeting a month ago, the folks at PGE were talking about the distance of the arms for safety issues, that we wanted no more than three feet or something like that, and they wanted four feet. And now you're saying one foot?
Their standard is three feet for arrays that are at a certain level on the pole, and we're proposing one foot or flush-mounted at the top of the pole. The trade-off would be that if we require shorter arms, they're going to need to have antennas located on more than one pole to provide the same number of antennas, and there are some issues associated with the equipment that we need to work out as well. The location of equipment, the cabling, and other things can only go a certain distance.
So this revision is to revise the three feet down to one foot? Is that correct, or am I missing something here?
I'm sorry. Well, we had proposed one foot. They commented that they would prefer three for the safety reasons for antennas at a certain level. The conversations I've had in the past with them have indicated that if it's up at top of the pole, the one foot would be okay, or flush-mounted would be okay, but when you get below a certain level on the pole, for their staff to do maintenance, they have to have the ability to go between the pole and the antennas, so that's why they require three. We would end up, if we keep the one-foot standard, that to provide the same number of antennas, they'd have to locate on poles nearby, so it would require more poles and shorter arms. So a little less visual impact as far as the width.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, from the ground up to point A, there would be no antennas, and then there would all be one foot above that, and they're agreeable to that?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
The representative from PGE also asked for a clearer definition on engineer in the code. Staff recommends no revisions. Can you explain what you're finding?
We'd actually gone through that revision several times with the wireless industry and the public utility providers previously, and that's the worry we ended up with previously. So we didn't find a reason to change that again at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Fox.
Just a quick one, looking at the additional comments by Ms. Ruder. Has anyone done an impact study on property values, just to address a public comment?
We have not. I would anticipate that it would be difficult to get that data, and I don't know if the counties have had any experience tracking that for assessed values.
Commissioner Blasey.
Thank you. A couple of quick questions. Could you just clarify the notification process? I know that that's something that folks are interested in, so we're recommending keeping it the same time period, but can you clarify how that's actually done and how the 14 days is still reasonable?
Okay. So for a Type II process, we would receive the application, make sure it's complete. Once it's complete, we send out the request for comments. We allow 14 days for citizens to comment and neighborhood associations to comment. And then once we get their comments, we write the staff report. We send out the staff report, and then they'd have the opportunity to appeal if they had commented previously.
And how do you send that out? Is that electronically? Do you send mailings to folks that would be impacted?
It's typically mailings to the property owners because we use the assessor's property records for that, and we develop maps based on the location of the site. We go 250 feet from the boundary of that property outward and work with the GIS department, IT department, to get the labels for those. And then some of the other notifications are done by mail and by email that the staff assistant has for her regular mailing list of the people that always receive those types of applications. With a Type III, it's similar. That would be a public hearing, so we would allow a 20-day notice for those cases from the time we send it out. We send out that notice 20 days prior to the public hearing so people can attend the public hearing and comment there or submit written testimony if they'd like.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Blasey?
Sorry. I do have one more. Just for clarification also, there are a couple places in the amendments where you indicate that additional study will be done, additional information will be provided if needed to City Council. One of the comments that came in from Ken Lyons was, you know, they would like to see that, that language, that draft language, before it goes to City Council. They'd like to, you know, have an opportunity to comment prior to that, and that it also wouldn't come before the Planning Commission. Could you just clarify a little on, because I know there are at least three areas where there are comments that additional research and possible comments need to be made?
At this point, we did include in the revised version of 715.090 that you received tonight, the language changes related to variances and adjustments, so that was the major issue. We know that we probably haven't addressed every little comment that they've made on development standards for each different type of equipment and each antenna and all of that, but we felt that what we had was reasonable. And those were the major things that I realized we did not address in this current revised draft, and they may want us to address in the future.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? All right. If there is a representative of a neighborhood association that wish to speak representing the neighborhood association. All right, then we'll go to the list and...
There are three of us from NEN here.
And I want to let you know that the Neighborhood Association, according to the Planning Commission rules, has 10 minutes, so the tag-team approach.
Okay. Can I first answer one of your questions? Would that include the 10 minutes?
I don't know. Sure.
You asked about if there had any study done on the impact of the wireless facilities to property values, and if you check the minutes of the last hearing, I did testify to that effect, and I cited a study that was done by the Appraisers Journal where they actually looked at sales, and the overall was 20% to 25% reduction in value of a property that was near a wireless facility, and that was from actual sales. So that addresses your question of impact on property values.
Well, okay, I'd ask, that was a test, a survey that was done here in the Salem area?
Pardon?
That was a test done here in the Salem area?
No, it's the Appraisers Journal, so I imagine it's a wider area. But the entire study is available online. I wasn't planning to testify to that effect tonight, so I didn't bring all the data that I had at the first hearing, but I just wanted to address your study that yes, there have been studies done, actual market studies, and the bottom line is the decline was 20 to 25% of property value, which I might point out also affects property taxes and 20 to 25% less revenue that the city of Salem would have for funding essential services. Not only affects the homeowner, it affects the revenue of the city. So I wasn't planning on that, but I'm happy to address your question. My name is Laurel Lynn Schellen. I reside at 606 14th Street Northeast, Ward 1, and in pulling out that data... Have to get back to where I plan to start. The Northeast Neighborhood Association NEN submitted written hearing comments dated March 5th. I'd like to illustrate some of our NEN concerns with this example. A family moved into NEN because they used to live out in the country where a cell tower was erected. The father had a pacemaker that the cell tower emissions affected. He said his doctor told him, "Move or die." This shows that it's important to Salem residents that they receive adequate advanced notice of proposed cellular structures. Some residents might even have to relocate. In order to have adequate advanced notice, NEN supports changing the public notice and comment period to 30 days. The proposal is 14 days from the date of mailing. Most neighborhood associations meet once a month, so 14 days is inadequate. When the City Council met weekly, NEN met weekly. When the City Council ceased meeting weekly, we ceased meeting weekly. We'd like to continue working the strong partnership between neighborhood associations and the city, but 14 days is not adequate notice. Those of you that get and read the Salem Statesman Journal, I noticed there was an article in there yesterday, Monday, March 25th, page 3C, regarding the Salem, City of Salem urban development. The article is, the headline is Salem Development Plan Up For Comment, and I'd like to read you one sentence. The Housing and Community Development Annual Actual Plan is undergoing its required 30-day notice comment period. We think this new code should also have a 30-day notice comment period and hope that that will be part of your recommendation. NEN would also like to have the notice to property owners at least a 1,500-foot radius. The proposal is only for 250 feet. This is half a football field. It's really not adequate. I mean, it's almost like nothing. The other thing I'd like to address is we support monitoring the emission levels. The city can use the considerable revenue fees that it receives from the wireless carrier to ensure that emissions do not exceed the FCC lawful limits. We understand that these limits are not set by the city, they're set by the FCC, but industry self-regulation is not in the public's interest. If you remember at the first hearing on February 26th, Sally White from West Salem testified, and I quote her, "When someone monitors themselves, it doesn't always work out too well." And there are other cities that do, that use the revenue fees, that do the self-monitoring, and they have found it doesn't always work out too well. So for the safety of Salem, at no cost to the city or the residents, fees received from the carriers can easily be used to monitor. I'm told there are small monitors the size of a cellphone that, for example, the water utility meter readers could take along and in a second monitor the facilities. Those of you that get the Statesman Journal, on Sunday, you might have noticed on the Statesman Journal opinion page are two letters to the editor from Citizens. I'll read you the headlines. Why Doesn't City Monitor Radiation? The other headline, Cellular Code Should Include Funds To Monitor. Read you one paragraph. So why aren't they monitoring cell towers and wireless antenna radiation like other cities do to be sure the levels are within the Federal Communication Commission's lawful limits? This is important to people with pacemakers and other health problems. Monitoring can easily be done at no cost to the city by using revenue the city receives from the cell tower fees. Letting a billion-dollar industry self-regulate itself is like putting a fox in charge of the hen house. The second... The second letter also addresses using funds to monitor, to be sure they're within lawful limits. And I'd like to enter both of these articles into the minutes. The other thing I'd like to address is putting new equipment underground. As Pamela mentioned, the industry has pointed out, this is more expensive. Yes, I know, because I and some of my Nen neighbors paid out of our own pocket to put all of our utilities underground. And it would reduce our property values to have these cellular companies come in and now put up their, their wires and equipment. It can be done, we, we have done it, we have paid for it ourselves. I don't know if my other two Nen members would like to add any comments?
Not, not during Nen time. But thank you.
Okay. So Nen submitted written comments. There are seven specific things that we support. None of them cost the city any money. They're easy to do, change 14 to 30 days. The notice to property owners, extend it from 250 feet to 1,500 feet. Use the cellular money, part of it, to monitor emissions. Put new equipment underground as many of us have paid for under our own pockets. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Any question? Commissioner Frye?
Yes, good evening. Just to clarify that, you just said 1,500 feet. Are you talking 1,500 feet or 1,000 feet or 500 feet?
1,500 feet.
1,500 feet, up from 250.
From the radius of the proposed site.
Okay.
All the, all the suggestions that Nen support were put together after the first hearing. They're all in supportive of other testimony that you've heard from other groups and citizens.
Okay.
And we think that these are recommendations that would help keep our neighborhood safe and livable as it affects the new cellular code.
All right, I have one more question.
Yes.
You mentioned that your study showed that cellular towers reduced your property value by 20 to 25 percent. In today's world, a lot of people are going away from a landline and are just using cellphones. So if you had a home that didn't get cell service and someone was coming to buy your home, how much do you think that would reduce your value?
Well, I don't think that is an issue, because right now in residential areas where there aren't these cellular facilities, there doesn't seem to be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Christopher Williams?
You talked about a 30-day period for Housing and Urban Development Annual Plan?
30-day comment period, yes.
How did you, how did you compare that to a Type II application?
Well, I think the public right to know is a minimum of 30 days regarding what the subject matter is.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question? I think the public has a right to know, and that right to know, a reasonable time is 30 days. 14 days from the date of mailing is not adequate for individuals, especially with the postal service saying they're going to discontinue weekend mail in August, and with neighborhood associations which have a historic integral part of working with city government, not even getting a notice in a 14-day period does not seem reasonable.
Okay. I, I think what city staff is trying to do, they talked about a shot clock for the applications for co-location as well as 120 days for land use decisions.
Right.
With a Type II application. And I think if you've ever tried to do anything with government, the timelines, they may appear adequate, but sometimes when you start into the process, you realize that, wow, this is, this is going to take a lot of effort on my part to get this thing through to completion. And I think the reasons why they decided on the 14-day has to do with the fact that it's very difficult to get business done. And these are, these are things that are occurring all the time. We don't see them, but these applications and these, you know, this construction is going on to service a growing community. And so we kind of have to balance, I think, and understanding staff's response, we have to balance, you know, that need to develop and then also the requirement to notify people.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Williams, and we did read and study staff's responses and are aware of those deadlines.
Right.
But I think the overriding factor is the public's right to know. And there are a lot of people in this community that have heart problems and pacemakers. This greatly affects their life. They may, you know, have to sell their property, move, make other living arrangements. 30 days, you know, is reasonable for the public right to know. Is there any way those other deadlines could be extended?
I think that's beyond my scope, but I don't know. I'm sure that there's a lot of talk about deadlines and how we can best meet those deadlines as a, as a governing body and as a city staff. But I would say that if someone has a health condition, wouldn't it be reasonable that they would be concerned about where they're locating? I mean, obviously, if they're locating next to a, a cell tower.
Yes, and the example I used, we have a Nen family that located in a Nen neighborhood because it was safe for them to do so health-wise. But at the rate that, you know, these wireless antennas are being attached to utility poles, they may need 30 days to relocate.
Well, I, you know, citizens, I mean, at some point, we have to take responsibility for ourselves, and I understand your concerns, and having two more weeks is great. And I think that at the, at the end of the day, you know, we all want to protect health. And, but the FCC, the requirements of the, the testing, if the FCC is doing the testing, if the city understands that it's out of their jurisdiction to make any decisions based on testing for the, the radiation levels, then there's a reason why. And, and it's because there could be a lot of liability there. Does that make sense? And maybe staff could comment on liability under this topic.
But the 14 days from date of mailing disenfranchises the neighborhood associations.
Are there any other questions?
I might have one comment on Mr. Williams' comment there. The 14 days is a notification to be prepared to come to the, to whoever's doing the hearing and give your testimony. It is not 14 days from the time that it's mailed until the tower's put up and, and everything starts happening. It's simply notification that this hearing is going to take place. It doesn't in any way start construction the day that the mailing goes out and it's done in 14 days. So it's, it's simply notification that something's going to happen, you come to the hearing, then from the hearing whatever is decided there, then in a period of time, they start construction. So if someone was concerned, they could, they have more than two weeks to do that. So that's my comment.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but that is not our concern. Our concern is that if a neighborhood association meets once a month, they're not going to get and be able to comment during the 14-day period from date of mailing.
Right. And you mentioned that you used to meet weekly, and now you meet how often?
Nen, Nen used to meet weekly. We met 7 o'clock every Monday morning when the council met weekly. But when the council stopped meeting weekly, we changed our meeting schedule.
So how often a month does Nen meet?
We meet twice a month, and I think we're the most frequent. I don't know if any other neighborhood association meets twice a month. I think we are the only one. All the other neighborhood associations only meet once a month.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
I, I just wanted to ask, you say that self-monitoring is a bad thing?
Pardon?
Did you say self-monitoring is not good?
No, I don't believe I did.
Well, I thought, I wrote that down. I thought that you were against self-monitoring, but that's what you're asking the city, that's what you were asking the city to do.
No, self-monitoring by the industry is a bad thing. But the city is not, is not monitoring themselves, they're monitoring a business that would be objective monitoring.
Well, so who's in charge of monitoring? FCC, right?
No, my understanding is that the FCC sets the limits.
Okay.
And now the industry is up to let free to self-monitor themselves. But other cities that monitor to see if the industry is complying with FCC limits have discovered they don't always comply.
So would you say the FCC periodically does monitoring to determine if industry is...
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge. I have no knowledge that FCC does any monitoring. They, my understanding is they only set the limits. It would be up to the individual city to be sure that the industry is complying with the limits set by the FCC.
Is anybody doing monitoring in the city? Do you know of?
I've asked that question, and I've been told no by staff.
No, I, I meant anyone, anywhere with any equipment.
How would I know that?
I don't know. You know, you seem to know quite a bit about this.
Anyone, anywhere?
I'm, I'm curious. You know, there, there are a lot of watchdog organizations that take up a cause. You've taken up a cause to come down and, and talk about radiation, and so I'm just wondering if you have any knowledge that anyone is monitoring the radiation?
I, I don't have any knowledge. As far as I know, the city of Salem and its residents and its neighborhood associations have no idea if the industry is or is not complying with the FCC standards.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? One comment if I could, I really appreciate your involvement in this issue, and did want to tell you that I believe West Salem Neighborhood Association now meets twice a month, which I think is a, a great idea. If, if you can't get what you request, sometimes you have to pick up the involvement. And so I appreciate you folks doing that.
Nen is a very dedicated neighborhood association, as I say, for decades, I think. We met at 7 o'clock every Monday morning to be prepared for council hearings, and we do hope that you will change that notification period to 30 days so we can continue to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Again, I'll ask if there's anybody representing a specific neighborhood association, if they have any comments to give to the Planning Commission at this point. All right, seeing none, then we'll go to the list, and I'll start with Joan Lloyd. If you'd give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Joan Lloyd, 1577 Fourth Street Northeast in Salem, 97301. I am specifically addressing, oop, specifically addressing the 30-foot minimum setback, which is a drastic reduction from 300 feet. And I understand why you wouldn't want to do variances for everything, but I'm afraid you're loosening up the rules way too much. And so because of my concern, I wrote an email to Pamela Cole, which I didn't submit as testimony, asking her if a residential property 60-foot square could get a cell tower in it. And this was her answer. Under the proposed setbacks, if the property is at least 60 feet wide by 60 feet deep, it would be possible to place the center of the base of the support tower at least 30 feet from the property line of any abutting property. The proposed standards would also require a sight-obscuring fence or wall around the support tower and at least 10 feet from all property lines and landscaping, at least 10 feet wide between that fence or wall and all property lines. The next paragraph says that the minimum lot dimensions in the RA Residential Agriculture and RS Single Family Residential Zones are 40 feet in width and 70 feet in depth and 4,000 square feet. Under the proposed standards, it's unlikely that a support tower could be placed on a small lot with an existing dwelling, but it's possible that a support tower could be located on a larger lot with an existing dwelling or in a small vacant lot. You might want to walk around your neighborhood and look at the size of the properties around you. Our lot is 67 by 125 feet. Our neighbor's lot is 75 by 125, and we live, you know, downtown, pretty much, the central core, so to speak. The only thing that would keep it from, from our getting a cell tower is that we're a historic district. But that doesn't mean that a few blocks away, there are not larger properties. Our property is a lot and a half, and there are other places where people have lot and a half, double lots, or whatever. So you might want, want to think about that, and even if it looks like a tree, they've still got that big box on the top of it. And I believe that it would affect property values, and according to a study, that it does. Maybe not everywhere all the time, but you also might want to think what it's, what it could do to your property. I know I certainly wouldn't want on going in. I might want one on my own because it could bring in $600 a month. At least that's what Velocitel told us that a U.S. market would be getting for the cell tower they want put there. So for a lot of people, that income might be very important. Anyway, that is my observation. So maybe 300 was too much, but I really think that 30 is not enough, so.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Lloyd? Don't see any. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next would be Nancy McDaniel.
Hi, my name is Nancy McDaniel. I live at 265 21st Street Northeast, and I'm also here to testify against the 30-foot setback. When, when you make, I think when the city makes such a drastic change to existing code, you need to have a solid basis showing the reason for the change. And I've gone through all the materials, and I haven't seen anything that supports the reason for this, the, the change in the setback. I haven't seen anything, as Joan said, maybe 300 is too much, but why 30? I haven't seen anything that explains the basis for that. And the second thing is the, the lack of research on, on looking into the impact on property values is also very disappointing. I would think part of due diligence would be looking at how this affects people. I, I think that has to be done. One of the things Pamela said was the ordinance was intended to strike a balance between the needs of the cellphone towers and, and the neighborhoods, and I don't see that, I don't see that in the work that's been done to support this. Thank you.
The question... The questions from Ms. McDaniel. All right, thank you. Next would be Ed Fornier. I believe that's the right pronunciation, I hope.
Good evening. My name is Ed Fornier. I'm with Land Services Northwest, and I'm a consultant for Verizon Wireless. Really only had two points this evening, and one of those appears to have been addressed when I reviewed the updated copy of the code that was just available, and that being for Section 715.010 sub B that begins, quote, "All wireless communication facilities located in the right-of-way shall be co-located," end quote. The original definition of co-location specified existing facilities, i.e. if you had a wooden phone pole in the right-of-way, you could not swap that out for one that had a higher structural capacity to also accommodate antennas by that definition. I had a litany of documentation I was going to walk the council through to say I think that was inadvertently placed and should be corrected. Then after reviewing the copy that I just picked up here today, I didn't see it in staff report, but perhaps it was, I see that the definition of co-location removes the requirement that only be on an existing structure. So again, I'm not going to walk you through the logic steps that I had, that small definition change into 715.05f for co-location. Again, to remove, quote, "an existing," end quote, I think solidifies that change, and is also congruent with the change in the siting priorities, now moving a replacement of an existing utility structure or other structure, i.e. tower, as may be needed into the second siting priority. So I think that is an excellent change to be made. The only other part is one that I touched upon when I was here last month, and that's in regards to Page 17 on the staff report, and that's Section 715.100 sub B. Again, the use of the third party. Certainly appreciate the modifications staff has made to reduce the amount of applications that might be utilized for to those that are in certain zones for a new tower, or say, a variance. The underlying concern is simply with that of abuse. There's a jurisdiction that will go unnamed that for $500 reviews every EME report that comes in by a state licensed engineer. What you get back for your $500 is typically an email that says, "Looks good to me." Again, there's no reasonable clause in the language. There's nothing one can do other than have your application rejected because you don't comply with code, or write the check. Again, the only concern being is to place the word reasonable or something along those lines in there, so that, again, there is some impetus to not bear any and all expenses that may be incurred. We certainly don't believe that's the intent, but again, written on their face, that could theoretically happen. Again, also, the words such as, quote, "reasonable," end quote, and "reasonably," again, quote unquote, are used throughout the myriad of chapters that comprise the city zoning ordinance at this time. Certainly not a new concept to have in the language of the ordinance with that, and again, that was for Section 715.100 sub B. Thank you for your time, and I can certainly elaborate upon anything I brought up this evening.
All right, any questions? Don't see any, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And last on the list is Bill Howard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Bill Howard. My office address is 8960 Northeast Alderwood Road, Portland 97220. I'm a project manager with Odeoga Pacific Corporation, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of T-Mobile. I want to start my remarks by thanking the staff. As was pointed out last month when we met, this has been a long, arduous process in giving this, the ordinance before you, taking up not months but years. We were very pleased to see the staff report. We were very pleased to see many of the accommodations that were made in this report, and I think this is a significant step forward in what our goal is here, and that is a balanced ordinance, which takes into account the needs of the wireless network and the needs of the wireless customers, the growing demand, as was pointed out last year or last month when we were here. We are facing a 104% data usage increase every 12 months. We're more than doubling the demands on this network every 12 months. This is why it's important that we have the balance that we talked about last month. And without going through the changes that are before you, they've been certainly well-defined in the staff report that Pamela and her team have put together. I want to spend just a couple of minutes on two points. First of all, the follow-up Ed's remark here. We remain concerned about the fact that the outside fees for the variances and the type III proceedings with public hearings are uncapped. And not that this is a game of one-upsmanship, but I personally have been involved in public hearings for new towers where similarly unregulated outside consulting fees ran a staggering $25,000 for one site. That breaks budgets, that breaks capital expenditures, that takes money. This has to be dedicated elsewhere in the market. There are tangible, real consequences for the area right here in terms of your own wireless development when we are faced with those kinds of unknowns for one single tower. The other thing I'd like to mention in regards to that is obviously you have a competent staff here. Outside consultants aren't needed to come in and go through an application and define, well, does this meet setbacks? Does this meet the tower height? You have a competent staff here. Outside consultants, as Pamela just recommended in her remarks, technical data. Is the capacity need there? Is the coverage need there? What kinds of things are those? This is not something that takes hundreds of hours. It's not something that takes thousands and thousands of dollars with a consequent drain on resources and the impacts on the rest of the wireless network. I once again strongly suggest that you put a cap on those outside fees. It's not something that's being unreasonable, but it is something that can be taken advantage of because of the inherent conflict of interest. The second one that I want to talk about, and I see that Jim Carver is here from PGE, it's also been mentioned by in Ed's remark, there was some additional discussion with Pamela about the question of standoffs on these utility poles. That is a concern. It remains. We have pointed out the safety concerns for not only the utility workers, but also for the wireless workers. I was very pleased to see that those safety concerns were accommodated in the question of vaulting, which was limited to where it was absolutely necessary, and that is in the historic districts. I'm suggesting to you that the very same safety concerns drive our requests in terms of giving us the standoffs that we need where we can actually work in these areas without any significant impacts, visual impacts in the area. There are measures that can be taken in terms of painting, matching the antennas to the facade where worker's safety is preserved. I think I heard Pamela say that we're only talking about flush mounting at the very top of the poles. I'm not sure I saw that in the ordinance. Perhaps she can explain that some more, but I also don't want to put words in Jim Carver's mouth because I know that's a grave concern of his as well. I want to take just a couple of minutes and respond to some of the other concerns that have been raised here at the hearing tonight. I think the staff has done a good job and a steadfast job in responding to ongoing concerns about, first of all, emissions. As was pointed out in the staff report, this has been federally preempted. It is federally preempted by the FCC. It's been federally preempted by Congress. It is something that, as Pamela and her staff have taken out, I don't know of any carrier that would stand idly by for action to be taken, whether it's in connection with an application or whether it's after the fact. For something to be done based on what somebody perceives is a violation of the FCC rule. I think the staff is correct. I think that is well-documented here, and I would recommend that the ordinance that you have adequately and, more importantly, accurately represents the position the city of Salem is in vis-à-vis the federal requirements. Last thing I want to talk about, again, also in terms of the emissions, there's been a lot of discussions on health impacts. What about this? What about that? Stepping aside from the room, but these are federally preempted. The fact of the matter is, we're talking about non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation. It's the same thing you get from your TVs. It's the same thing you get from your flat-screen displays. It's the same thing you get from these fluorescent lights. Mayo Clinic has done a documented six-month in-acute care facility study to determine whether there was any impact on either the operations of the hospital or its equipment or the health of the patients. That impact was none because in top of our regulations that we face as an industry, the makers of every one of those items, those equipments, they all had their own shielding requirements from the FDA. Those are the kinds of things that are happening on a federal level that may not be recognized on a local level, and I submit to you that that is why this entire area is being left as a matter of federal regulation. I probably exceeded my five minutes. I do want to thank you all again. I'd of course be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Howard? Commissioner Fox?
You seem to have been doing this for a while. Have you ever had to face the property value question?
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. I think, again, being very balanced, but having some awareness of the Ninth Circuit federal law in this area, I think that is, from the federal court perspective, that is a matter that needs to be determined on a case-by-case aspect. There are federal regulations in the 96 Act which govern what is a substantial element of proof for these kinds of city decisions. I think there is a risk to try to build in to the ordinance itself hearsay, third-party reports, particularly when we're being referred to another report by people that are not here, they're not available for cross-examination, and by all accounts, they don't even concern the Salem market, let alone the specifics of an application that the city is being asked to address, either by administrative review or by public hearing. The courts have recognized that the question of property values is one that has to be supported by substantial evidence. We certainly have a burden as the applicant, but once we meet that threshold, that burden shifts to others that are coming in. And I would suggest to you, and you certainly, the city is certainly represented by capable council here, but those are matters that are relegated to individual proof in a specific application, and I think there are risks in making assumptions in an ordinance scheme such as this.
Commissioner Frye?
You made a comment about the emissions, and they're the same as our TV, or it's the same as these lights or the rest of that. However, we've seen a lot of things in the media about cell phones and brain cancer and the rest of that, so you can understand why people are quite concerned. It may be the same kind of emission, but do the towers have a higher volume of emission or a higher?
No, they don't. And there's so many aspects of this, but to make this as clear as I can, the antennas are strictly limited in their output, and that's one of the reasons why we are constantly coming back to jurisdictions and saying, you know, we need something else here. We can't go out there and simply crank up the volume, crank up the power, and start shooting out over larger areas. So we have limitations on the emissions from those antennas, and by the same token, we have limitations on the devices themselves. Remember the bag phones that were this big? Well, now we're not in devices that are this big, so there's only so much power in those as well. And those limitations are why we quickly reach the limits of our network, and we're coming back for capacity sites, or we're coming back for, you know, another site over here with taller height, because those are all very real technical limitations that we have, both on the outputs of the antenna and on the limitations of the cell phones themselves.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Commissioner, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I was trying to explain my understanding of what the trade-off would be if we don't allow the three-foot antenna arms, and if we're only requiring flush mounting or one-foot antenna arms, and we won't have the three-foot antenna arms on the same pole. What problems does that create if we say that, and then the providers have to put the antennas on another pole nearby? Or are there interference issues or other issues that come into play there?
Okay. Again, I'm going to leave to Jim to talk about the utility and the safety issue, because I think that's separate from what you were asking Pamela. From a wireless perspective, when we're required to flush mount, and that is basically, our antennas are virtually wrapped around a pole. I mean, there's no standoff. We do have safety. We have equipment access issues. We're required to use smaller antenna. If you look on some of the larger poles, we're able to do what's called an electric down tilt, where we can focus, we can move those, and maximize the coverage, which is our goal despite what people may think. It is our goal to try to maximize coverage from every one of these sites. But when you snug them up there and you wrap them around that pole, you take away from us the ability to do the electrical down tilt, to do the fine-tuning adjustments to maximize the coverage from that. So the answer is yes. You are thereby, by limiting the coverage we can get from those flush-mounted antennas, you are creating an incipient need that we're going to have to address somewhere down the line.
Any other questions? Commissioner Frye?
What is the current policy in Salem and other cities as far as the standoffs? Do you know?
I can't speak to what the current policies are here in Salem. I'm sure Pamela would probably understand what that is. I know that, you know, Jim and I are working in some other markets there, and, you know, we're getting the two, we're getting the three-foot standoffs, and that's particularly important where we're both using utility poles that have the high transmission lines, because their crews need access to it, our crews need access to it, and if we're sitting there wrapped around that pole, it makes things difficult for everybody.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Just one more real quick, and you may have answered it a few minutes ago, but how do you know that a tower is compliant or that a company is compliant with FCC limits? Did you answer that earlier by stating that there's only so much output available from it that?
Yes, the antennas that, and in a lot of jurisdictions, we're required to file, and I think that's a part of our, the application process here, we're required to file a certification, which is, this is what the antenna output is.
And it's not capable of being cranked up any higher?
That's correct.
Which is why you need more, or why you might need more in an area?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
To?
And, you know, we file certifications of regulatory compliance all the time, and I think that's still a part of the ordinance that you had before you came in.
Okay, thank you.
A question, maybe a follow-up on that, because my understanding, the FCC sets the emission controls, and then looks to you, the industry, to make sure that those limits are met and not exceeded.
That's correct.
And so what I'm hearing you say is, the equipment that we install is limited when it comes to emissions, therefore, we must meet the FCC requirements. My question is, do you do any additional or independent monitoring? And if so, what kind of device do you use, and can I buy it at Fred Meyer?
No, it's not available at Fred Meyer. There is monitoring that is done. It's done along with, you know, are we getting our frequencies out there? It's those kinds of things. That's handled by operations, at least in T-Mobile's sense. I can't speak for what the other carriers do. I certainly, you know, I'm aware generally that, you know, by design and both by measuring, that their sites are compliant. Every study that I've ever seen done, especially if you're talking about, and some questions were asked me last month, you're talking about a 100-foot tower with antennas at the top there, at the base, standing right next to that tower at the base, you're getting less non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation than we all are from these fluorescent lights right here in the street.
And my other question was regarding the fees, and I understand industry's nervousness when you have fees that are uncapped, but I also understand the city's desire to have flexibility, because quite frankly, it's the unknown. Both you and the previous speaker mentioned concerns about that that were specific to jurisdictions. I just want to make sure you've had no problem with Salem.
No, no, it's not that at all, and I didn't mean to imply that we have. I'm certainly not aware of those. My point is, I have personal experience in other jurisdictions which had, at least in that respect, similarly wide-open fees, wide-open fee provision, and there are certain consultants out there, it's a blank check, and they know it's not going to affect the city. It gets handed right off to that carrier, and it's not their responsibility. And I think that is a risk, both for the carriers, as well as for the city, and certainly the customers.
Commissioner Fox, real quick.
And so I guess getting back, is there a regulatory body, then, that goes out and monitors emissions?
Independent regulatory?
I don't know.
I mean, that would be within the FCC purview.
Right.
And I understand the concerns about various studies have done this. I would suggest to you--
But do you know of any? Like, after a tower is erected, does someone come out and actually do?
To my knowledge, no. Not from the FCC. They are depending on the carriers to install and design these things, so they are compliant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Howard? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you all.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the planning commission on tonight's agenda item? If so, if you would come forward. All right, seeing none, are there any additional questions of staff? Commissioner Frye?
Yes, Pamela, I was wondering if you could tell me the staff's reasoning for the 30-foot setback, going down from 300 feet to 30 feet? If you could just explain that for everyone here.
I looked back at earlier drafts that we had discussed in our staff review group, and the consultant had proposed 30-foot setback, and an alternative was a setback based on the height of the-- the height of the structure itself. We asked the consultant if that height-based setback was common, and she indicated it used to be in previous and older versions of code, but most jurisdictions have gotten away from that. So we ended up with the 30 that she had recommended, and we also looked at setbacks in other areas that aren't near residential zones to try to encourage location in those areas, industrial, commercial, other zones. And if they're not close to residential, then they would have a 15-foot setback from property lines. That would allow them to place the structures closer to property lines. Typically, what we see now in those areas would be a cell tower placed in a corner. The older ones don't have any landscaping around them or anything. The older ones are just as close as possible to a corner of a property, just to get it out of the way. And with more recent applications in those types of zones, we require a setback from residential zones based on height. That's in our special use standards. We would require the 10-foot buffer landscaping around it and the fencing. So we tried to figure out what's the minimum setback in those types of zones that we could have and still get all of the fencing and all of the landscaping, and it came out to 15 feet. So with the 30, it's a little bit more than that, but we realized that a lot of the neighbors and citizens agree that that's too close, so...
And you mentioned that part of this had to do with, like, strip malls or that kind of stuff where they're locating, but then there's residential next to it? And so at 300 feet, you wouldn't be able to do anything on most of those things that line commercial street or something like that?
Typically. As an example, the one on Liberty that's at McMenamin's. That zone is along both sides of the street, there's an RM2 zone immediately adjacent to it. So there wasn't any place that would serve the objectives and be 300 feet from all the residential zones and all the commercial office zones. So they went through a specific conditional use and variance process to reduce that setback and had to meet the additional variance criteria in order to do that. And as part of the conditions that we imposed, we required the type of camouflage design you typically call it, and that one's one of the ones that we have that looks like a fir tree, and it blends fairly well because there are other trees nearby. So with the proposal, we would get to those design standards as a standard rather than as a condition of approval.
Okay, great. My second part of that question is the standoffs, the one-foot standoff. I understand staff's desire to make the poles as least obtrusive as they can be. However, in my opinion, having more poles or more antennas on different poles rather than having them all on the same pole doesn't serve a benefit, as far as I can see. I was hoping that the gentleman from PGE was going to get up and talk so that I could ask him some of the questions and see what other jurisdictions do, but that didn't happen. So this was just for the visual effect, that's why we went down to the one-foot.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will move to deliberations. And Commissioner Frye, when you are ready.
I move, I make the motion on the continued hearing for the Code Amendment, case number CA 10-04 regarding wireless communication facilities, that we accept staff report with one change, and that would be going back to the three-foot arms.
Second the motion.
All right, we have a motion. Any comments? Commissioner Blasing?
Thank you. I think hearing from industry folks, especially PGE, and hearing that's a safety concern, I support the amended motion. I agree. We want to make sure that these are completely safe, so...
Any other comments?
I'm going to be voting for the motion. I do agree there has been, this entire issue is all about balance. Sitting here in this, may seem slight, but if we only could have invented cell phones 60 years ago, we could put them on all of our antennas that were on all of our roofs. The issue is the balance between the service aspect of the folks that are servicing the demands and the rapidly increasing demands for wireless communication. And balancing that with the desires of the neighborhoods to stay and be as livable as possible. And for me, the issue is that we're talking about tools that service the entire community. I think the tools that do the service should be spread out in the community, and I think the staff has done a good job of trying to do that in the balancing effect with the neighborhoods, so... Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us to the second opportunity for appearance of interested citizens. If there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the planning commission, now would be that time. Seeing none, urban planning administrators report.
Yes, real quick, Mr. President, I think it's important to acknowledge that last week we had our last meeting of the UDC Advisory Committee. That project has been underway now for about three and a half years, and it's moving forward. The next big thing that's going to happen is a work session, a joint work session with the City Council and Planning Commission on April 8th at 5:30. Please put that on your calendars. At that point, we're going to talk about the major changes that we see coming forward from this project and talk about the timeline for moving it forward to the public hearing process. At this point, we would appear that the public hearing for the planning commission will be in May. We'll narrow that down as we get closer, but that's kind of what we're looking at. And I want to thank you and the other members of the UDC Advisory Committee for all of that hard, long work. Thank you.
I just have one question. Where will that meeting take place? Here or in...
That'll be in Anderson, in the library.
Thank you.
All right, any commission comments for the good of the order? Seeing none, our next meeting will be next Tuesday, April 2nd, and tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I wonder what folks thought of our meeting years ago in April, telephone...